Morning. Thank you, Councilman. We're gonna start now. We have a staffs of quorum. I ask all guests and visitors, please retire behind the rail. Thank you very much for your cooperation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Hubert Barnes, Pastor of Star of Hope Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Bobby Heenan. I would ask all members, guests and visitors, to please rise.
Shall we bow our heads in prayer? Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We also express our gratitude for this gathering, and the council members and their staffs, and their tiredest labor for the citizens of this great city. We invoke to your presence on this occasion, and we pray also for your blessings on the members of this august body. Please grant them your guidance, your direction, your peace, your protection, and your wisdom as they address the plethora of issues before them. We pray, in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Appreciate it. Council bides. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of April 7th, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 7th, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of April 7th, 2016. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no leaves for absence for today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down and witness their government in action. We hope your stay here is a knowledgeable one, and also a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for your attendance. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill, who presented a resolution in solemn recognition of the annual remembrance of the six million Jewish martyrs who perished during the Holocaust. With Sarita Goschel and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman O'Neill, we have Councilman Alan Dom.
This is a resolution in solemn recognition, the week of May 1st through May 8th, 2016, as the annual remembrance of the six million Jewish martyrs who perished during the Holocaust. Whereas, over sixty years ago, six million Jews were murdered in the Nazi Holocaust as part of a systemic program of genocide, and millions of other people suffered as victims of Nazism. Whereas, the people of the City of Philadelphia should continually rededicate themselves to the principle of equal justice for all people. And whereas, the people of the City of Philadelphia should remain eternally vigilant against all tyranny, and recognize that bigotry provides a breeding ground for tyranny to flourish. End.
Whereas, the Memorial Committee for the Six Million Jewish Martyrs has chosen as the theme for this year's memorial, remembering the past for the sake of our future, this year's ceremony will focus on the continued need for successive generations to remember the Holocaust, and will feature poems, readings, and music that speak to the theme. We applaud the committee for the honor they will bestow on the memory of those who perished, and on those who survived, to build and strengthen life in Philadelphia and other communities. Whereas, Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia and the Memorial Committee for the Six Million Jewish Martyrs invite all citizens of Philadelphia and the region to join the commemoration ceremony on April 17th, 2016, in front of the Holocaust Monument on the Benjamin Franklin Parkway from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m.
Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby recognize the week of May 1st through May 8th, 2016, as the annual remembrance of the six million Jewish martyrs. We further recognize the horror of the Holocaust, and extend to the Memorial Committee the respect and admiration of this legislative body. And this is a true and correct copy of the original resolution adopted by the Council of the City of Philadelphia on the 7th of April, 2016, signed by the President of City Council, Darrell L. Clark, co-sponsored by all members of council. Thank you.[434.81][434.81](applause)
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Goschel for remarks. No problem.
(laughing) Sorry. Good morning. I am Sarita Goschel, a child of Holocaust survivors, and Chair of the Memorial Ceremony for the Six Million Jewish Martyrs. Our community will gather once again on Sunday, April 17th, at the monument to the six million Jewish martyrs, to remember, honor, and mourn those who were mercilessly annihilated during World War II, simply because of their faith. The tragedy of the Holocaust still lives within us. It is incomprehensible to grasp how easily it is to convince people that a group of other people are worthless and should be destroyed. Today, as we remember and mourn the loss of six million of our brothers and sisters, mothers, fathers, grandparents, aunts, uncles, we are cognizant that the hatred we see today in the Middle East bears a strong similarity to that which our own people suffered. Today, we see in real time the terror on the faces of minorities and the senseless slaughter of men, women, and children. We have witnessed the United Nations condemn the State of Israel for defending itself, while it remains silent about the atrocities being perpetrated by terrorists and other terror groups. I remember hearing, "We didn't know," but today, we do know. We watch it daily on our televisions. It is hard to believe that the world has not yet learned. As Jews, we have learned the lessons. Here in the greater Philadelphia area, we are teaching future generations of children of all faiths that it is up to us. We must find ways to live together. We must be tolerant of each other's customs and religions, and we must work together towards peace. The words "never again" were never more applicable. On behalf of the Jewish Community Relations Council of the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia, we are very pleased to be here today. We thank Council President Darrell Clark, Councilman-at-Large Alan Dom, and Councilman O'Neill. We are grateful to the City of Philadelphia for continuing to support our efforts, and we invite each of you to join us this Sunday. Thank you.[585.79][585.79](applause)
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom for remarks.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Councilman O'Neill for including me and this resolution, and I'll tell you why. This holds a special place in my heart, because my grandfather came here from Poland, Warsaw, in 1921. He was one of nine children. His eight brothers and sisters never made it. They were killed in a concentration camp. So, this is a very special resolution. I thank you for including me, and I really, this is great that this is happening. Thank you.[623.38][623.38](applause)
Thank you. Council bides. Council bides. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm, who will present a resolution on Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week. With Vicky Melvin and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining Councilwoman Gimm, we have Councilman Greenly, and Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, and Councilman Green, and Councilman Tottenberger, and Councilwoman Blackwell.
Last week, I attended a candlelight vigil with hundreds of families impacted by crime in honor of this week, and it recalled to me how important and rare such spaces are to honor and hear the voices of our families. The criminal justice system is not equipped to handle the full range of need for healing and the need for rebuilding of trust and hope for families who experience crime. Every day, children witness and live the consequences of violence in our lives and in our city, and families struggle when crimes are committed by those who profess to love us. So, we need a public health and restorative justice approach to our families and communities who suffer, and that that approach needs to go beyond the legal definitions of just crime and victim. And that's why we're here to remember, honor, and proclaim this week as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week. The people beside us, behind us, around us, live their lives in the spaces of compassion and healing. They bring professionalism, real science, and public policy understanding to traumatic experiences that none of us are prepared to deal with. They help us hear a vision of purpose, hope, and change in the voices of victims. And I wanted to honor them this week, and council honors them this week, with this resolution. I want to introduce my fellow colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones, who is Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and the Governor's appointee to the Pennsylvania Crime and Delinquency Commission.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and to all of our members on public safety who take on this arduous task of balancing the scales of justice to remember the victims. It doesn't take much for any of us. In my case, I was sixteen years old, on my way to what was called a social. It's a party. And we were walking down Upland Way in my neighborhood, and out of a driveway came a gunman, shot into the crowd. I had my arm around the young lady's waist, and it killed her dead. I was sixteen years old. Back then, it was not vogue to get counseling. So, as a young man, I internalized it the way, and processed it the way I did. I wound up not going to school for half a year, did a little bit of self-medicating, if you know what I mean. And to this day, I do not walk under an umbrella with a young lady, ever. Multiply that by everyone in this room who knows a victim, and knows someone who was victimized by crime, and we realize that we have to have things like Councilman Johnson's hearing, we have to have rapid response teams that go out and deal with trauma of victims. Councilman Johnson's hearing pointed out that the retaliation often starts right in the hospital room of the grieving. And if we understand the anatomy of it, we can begin to treat it, and so therefore, we honor victims, and we want to do more, put our money where our mouth is, more for them.
Thank you, Councilman. And we thank all of those who are here, and if we could just have a moment of silence to honor those around us who've experienced crime in their lives. So, we thank all of those who are here today for helping our families not only rebuild their lives, but to make us a more deeply compassionate and humane society. And with that, so this resolution proclaiming and designating the week of April 10th through 16th, 2016, as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week, to encourage citizens to assist crime victims, and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives.
Whereas, National Crime Victims Rights Week was established in 1981 to promote awareness and support for victims of crime, and is sponsored by the Federal Office for Victims of Crime, which provides funding to state victim assistance and compensation programs. And whereas, this year's theme is serving victims, building trust, restoring hope, recognizing that trust is of particular concern in communities that feel isolated from or invisible to mainstream service providers and the criminal justice system. End.
Whereas, a large proportion of people can expect to become the victim of crime at some point in their lifetime, making crime not a remote or distant issue, but rather one that touches many of our families and communities. And whereas, in 2015, after a period of significant decline, Philadelphia saw its murder rate climb with 280 murders, a 13% increase from 2014. End.
Whereas, young people are disproportionately victimized compared to other age groups. Of the national population of 14- to 17-year-olds, over 69% have been assaulted, 56% had experienced a property victimization, including robbery, 41% have been maltreated, and 27% have been sexually victimized at some point in their lifetime. End.
Whereas, crimes such as domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse affect survivors in the most intimate aspects of their lives. And whereas, according to the National Center for Victims of Crime, 25% of the crime victims experience lifetime PTSD, and 23% of the family members of homicide victims also develop PTSD at some points in their lives. Whereas, too often, factors such as language, culture, sexual orientation or gender identity, age, disability, or social isolation may prevent victims from seeking and receiving help. End.
Whereas, Philadelphia has taken steps through its sanctuary city policy to extend protections to undocumented immigrants, including those who are victims and witnesses to crimes, so that there is no need to fear that a call to the police for assistance will result in deportation. Additionally, the Department of Justice has launched a new initiative this year to reduce language barriers for underserved victims throughout the nation through training, technical assistance for victim service providers, and allied professionals.
Whereas, Philadelphia's network of victim advocacy organizations provide crucial services to crime victims throughout the city, often employing culturally sensitive, trauma-informed practices to ensure that victims have appropriate care and support at their time of greatest need. End.
Whereas, victims of crime living in the City of Philadelphia may receive compensation through the Victims Compensation Assistance Program, which is operated by the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. VCAP aids victims of crime by helping cover their medical, counseling, and travel expenses, as well as the loss of their earnings and support. End.
Whereas, rallies, candlelight vigils, and a host of commemorative activities are held each year to promote victims' rights and to honor crime victims and those who advocate on their behalf. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that the week of April 10th through 16th, 2016, will be recognized as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week, to encourage citizens to assist crime victims, and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives.
Chair recognizes Ms. Melvin for remarks.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilman Jones, and also Councilwoman Helen Gimm, for introducing this resolution and helping us bring awareness to National Crime Victims Rights Week, and declaring this week Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week. The Philadelphia Coalition for Victim Advocacy consists of agencies and individuals united for the purpose of securing and promoting the rights of crime victims in the City of Philadelphia. Since its inception in 1980, we have worked tirelessly to make the criminal justice system more responsive to the rights of victims and witnesses throughout community education, policy and legislative recommendations, and by identifying gaps in existing services. Many of our members provide invaluable counseling and therapy services, assistance in navigating the criminal justice system, and crisis intervention, as well as providing an arena for victims to voice their concerns, and helping to end the cycle of violence in our communities through education and advocacy. All victims must have the ability to access services when they need them. Our continued outreach and responses must evolve to ensure that services are culturally relevant, and that we collaborate across agencies and organizations to lessen the burdens on victims. It is critical that we are flexible and open to new approaches to reach those most in need. Again, thank you so much, and we really appreciate the Council's willingness to stand with us in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Council bides. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Greenly, and Councilman Johnson.
It is so appropriate, following the recognition of national victim services, that we continue on the theme of social justice and folks who work to help some of the most vulnerable constituencies in the City of Philadelphia. We are, we are represented.
Yeah, really. They brought the whole office?
They should, with the years of work. Squeezing. When they leave, right? All of us here in council, and some of us in our previous lives who've done advocacy work, at one point or another have interfaced with community legal services. And why? Because they are our social justice advocates. They work with us, they strongly advocate with us, and sometimes against us, to do the right thing by the citizens of Philadelphia. As we talk about criminal justice reform, everyone recognizes the critical work that community legal services and the lawyers in social justice have done around spongement clinics. And in fact, they've had to open up a courtroom, because that has been extremely effective. So, whether we're talking about mortgage foreclosures and predator lending, whether we're talking about water affordability, whatever the issue is, we can count on the expertise and the knowledge of these, and the dedication of the people that joined us this morning. And when you hit a 50 anniversary milestone, it is an opportunity for all of us to come together and really say, "Thank you." Gracias. The sensitivity to language access, the sensitivity to the location, and the challenges that a city like Philadelphia with such deep poverty faces. When folks feel like they have no hope, it is the people behind us that generate that hope. When we feel we can't break down the bureaucracy, it is the people behind us that show us that they can. And when we can't get it right here, it is these people that go to the courts and protect the most vulnerable constituency. So, I'm very proud to be joined by Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, who, as we were talking last week in council during the budget session, says, "I count on them for everything." Councilman Greenly and I, who have worked on deed fraud and other things, we all appreciate the work that everyone does here. So, recognizing and congratulating... So recognizing and congratulating and honoring Community Legal Services' family on its 50th anniversary. Whereas the dedicated staff members at Community Legal Services fight for the most vulnerable people in our city, including children, the elderly, immigrants, and people with disabilities, bringing power to the powerless in their quest for justice. And whereas for 50 years, Community Legal Services has opened its doors to low-income Philadelphians in need, helping more than 1 million residents who would have otherwise faced devastating consequences such as eviction, foreclosure, and loss of employment. And...
Whereas Community Legal Services stands up for thousands of Philadelphians each year, preventing homelessness, reuniting families, breaking down barriers, and keeping our residents healthy and our city safe. And whereas Community Legal Services is recognized as one of the premier legal service programs in the nation. And whereas Community Legal Services does incredible work to close the justice gap, changing lives, and helping our entire community by ensuring that excellent lawyers aren't only available to those who can afford them. And...
Whereas Community Legal Services brings millions of dollars into the city, expands access to health insurance for the uninsured, keeps low-income people in their homes with the utilities turned on, prevents improper loss of critical benefits like social security, food stamps, SSI, and welfare assistance, protects the rights of the elderly, and has pioneered the elimination of employment barriers such as criminal records. And whereas Community Legal Services reduces strain on city resources and helps people become self-reliant by helping people get jobs, collect the wages they are owed, and access the benefits they are entitled to. And whereas Community Legal Services has been a vital resource and a frequent partner to the Philadelphia City Council, working to help our city thrive, make water affordable, give people a fair chance at finding a job, fight wage theft, prevent eviction, and ensure that landlords cannot raise the rent without proper notice, save homes, help prevent lead poisoning of children, ensure that the city is safer, and make the Philadelphia a better place to live. And...
That is why I'm going to join Councilwoman Greenly in making sure that we restore and expand the funding of Community Legal Services. That's not on the resolution, but... Therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes, congratulates, and honors the 50 years of excellent work and dedicated community service Community Legal Services has given to our city and our community. Further be resolved, and a gross copy of this resolution will be presented to Community Legal Services as evidence of our sincere respect and admiration. I've never learned so much from such a dedicated group of people. Thank you.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Friedman for remarks.
You can tell our staff loves to be in City Council. I am Debbie Friedman. I am the Executive Director of Community Legal Services. First and most importantly, I want to say thank you. We are extremely honored to receive this recognition from City Council. We have been very lucky to work with Council members on many projects over these 50 years, both here in these chambers and throughout our great city. We are grateful to have had those opportunities to collaborate and to work for justice. We also deeply appreciate your leadership on behalf of low-income Philadelphians. I want to say special thanks to President Clark, to Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Greenly, who have been incredible stalwarts for our clients. Finally, I want to say to you, the leaders of our city, that CLS will continue to fight for justice for low-income Philadelphians. It is our mission, our passion, and our privilege. We look forward to another 50 years as partners in justice for Philadelphia. Thank you.
Council bides.
Could you please rise and welcome them? They are working with Councilwoman Brown this time, and was introducing, because St. Joe's is in a district, she yielded and asked me to take care of that, so I did.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and welcome. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Taubberger.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to acknowledge a special guest who is in chambers this morning, someone who's worked with me very closely. As you know, I was at the Northeast Philadelphia Chamber for 23 years. Dorothy Freel and her husband Pat are here today. She worked at the Northeast Chamber of Commerce for over 30 years, helping and developing small businesses and working on the countless problems that sometimes happen with small business. I appreciate your acknowledgement of her presence today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Welcome. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate your great work. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you very much, Council President. Two weeks ago, this Council passed a historic resolution honoring Jackie Robinson, a man who not only changed, who changed the face of American sports and culture. And in that resolution, we also apologized for the virulent racism he had experienced here in our city. In a recent documentary on his life that aired this week nationally, it was also noted that we are the first city to have done so in this country. To mark Jackie Robinson Day, which takes place tomorrow, I wanted to welcome this morning eight Jackie Robinson Foundation scholars and alumni, men and women who have received highly competitive scholarships from the Jackie Robinson Foundation, and welcome them here in our Council. And if we could just have them stand up, as well as members of the Board of the Business Association. I wanted to just note the Board of the Business Association of West Parkside, and a representative from the Jackie Robinson Foundation in New York. But these scholars, John Bernatjean, Melissa Bellarjo, Icy Etheridge, Masha Mayazi, James Johnson, Rolanda Johnson, Noayima Notem, Ian Delvilar, are all scholars and a wonderful recipient to let us know that this history and his legacy continues today. The Jackie Robinson Foundation is an organization whose goal is to continue Robinson's commitment to equal opportunity by addressing the achievement gap in higher education. It's a wonderful institution, and for over 40 years, the foundation has advanced its mission by awarding scholarships to outstanding high school graduates who attend four-year colleges and universities. So the amazing scholars and alumni are also just needed to acknowledge Mr. Damian Trevier, Director of Programs at the Jackie Robinson Foundation, and encourage all my colleagues and everyone in attendance to join the celebration tomorrow at the Philadelphia Stars Negro League Memorial Park at Belmont and Parkside to celebrate Jackie Robinson Day, to present a citation, and we'll be doing photos in Council afterwards at the close of chambers. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Welcome, again. Thank you. At this time, the next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring Kathy Black on the occasion of her retirement from AFSCME District Council 47.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees conveying conditional fees, simplety of certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 28th Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 1507 Frankfurt Avenue.
That will also be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And orders to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ridge Avenue, Hermit Street, Henry Avenue, and Lincoln Drive.
Bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees conveying conditional fees, simplety of certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 28th Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have three bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And orders to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Carpathia Street, Broad Street, Washington Avenue, and 15th Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance naming and designating, in addition to the Marion Anderson Recreation Center located at the corner of 17th and Fitzwater Streets, the Ryan Howard Training Center.
And that will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 14518 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "WWA: West Washington Avenue Overlay District" by adding additional standards and making related changes.
And that will also be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two non-privileged resolutions, co-sponsored by Councilman Jones, Blackwell, Parker, Johnson, Bass O., Reynolds Brown, Derek Green, Alan Dom, and Hellingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings to examine the inclusiveness, transparency, and efficiency of the city of Philadelphia's processes for the procurement of professional services, capital programs, and commodities.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Fairholle, East Tioga, Hunting Park urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 809 West Tioga Street.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. And the Chair now recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Duh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three privileged resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and remembering the late Ed Snyder, co-founder and owner of the Philadelphia Flyers for nearly 50 years, who passed away Monday, April 11, 2016, at the age of 83 after a long battle with bladder cancer.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the month of April as Financial Literacy Month in the city of Philadelphia, and authorizing the Joint Committees on Children and Youth and Education to hold hearings in order to discuss the issue of financial literacy amongst Philadelphia's youth and the possibility of implementing financial literacy classes in Philadelphia's public schools.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution acknowledging and recognizing the American Jewish Committee for their Mayors United Against Anti-Semitism Initiative, and commending Mayor James F. Kenny for his support of this initiative by adding his name to the list of more than 300 U.S. mayors and municipal leaders from 48 states and the District of Columbia who have supported this important initiative.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubberger.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill, one non-privileged, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And orders amending Section 9703 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Special Assembly Occupancies" by further providing for types of activity to be regulated and by altering the fees and requirements for a special assembly occupancy license.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar. Sorry. That's a bill, and that will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by Buttonwood Street, North 10th Street, Hamilton Street, Ridge Avenue, and North 11th Street for further conveyance.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged... And a non-privileged resolution calling for the installation of a city, of a city historic marker in the front of Quaker Meeting House at Fourth and Arch Streets and for the dedication of this marker to occur during the Democratic National Convention.
And that will be on this, next week's final passes calendar. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance amending Chapter 15600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Parks and Playgrounds" by adding a new section requiring all parks and playgrounds owned or controlled by the city to be more inclusive, intergenerational, and family-friendly, and provide equipment and play or fitness opportunities to accommodate children and adults with special needs.
Thank you, it will be referred to committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one non-privileged resolution, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, and I appreciate her allowing me to introduce this in her district, and four privileged resolutions, co-sponsored by council members Jones, Gimm, Squilla, Dom, and Kenyonas Sanchez. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution commemorating the unveiling of a statue of Corporal Michael J. Chrysens, Philadelphia's only Medal of Honor recipient of the Vietnam War.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Herman Fraser for his gold medal career in track and field athletic administration.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May 2016 as Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and their invaluable contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing San Mateo Carnavalero for the 10th anniversary of the Festival de Carnival de Puebla in Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution naming, also naming the 3600 block of Hamilton Street in Ho O Memorial Way to honor the memory of Im Ho O and to recognize his life and memorialize his lasting legacy.
Thank you. That will be on next week's final passes calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. Our next order of business is reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a report from the Committee on the Environment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be, forgive me, that the Committee on the Environment reports one bill out of committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on the Environment, to which is referred Bill Number 160110, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17600 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled Procurement Price Preferences by Adding a Preference for Alternatives to Expanded Polystyrene Under Certain Terms and Conditions." Respectful reports that as considered the same, I return to attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 160110.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160110. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had a first reading. It will be on our second reading and final passes on our next session of council. There are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up, he is not here. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on today's calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 160282, 160285, 160293, 160018AA, 160013, 160202, and 160113. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today, we will have our public session comment. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, I'd ask if you have not already done so, sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will be given an opportunity to go to the middle of the chambers at the podium. There's a device on that podium, has a light, and when the light is green, it will be your time to speak. When the light is yellow, you have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we really appreciate you adhering to the guidelines and concluding your remarks. Thank you very much for your cooperation, and, Mr. Decker, when you get a chance, please read the name on the list.
Joe Denhel, commenting on 160256 and 160282.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. I do hope that you don't try to mute my comments again. Counsel is an agent and agency designed solely to serve the people. How can you serve the people if you restrict public comment or complaints for assistance? Can the fire department refuse to take 911 calls?
Are you speaking on the resolutions that you?
Yeah, I'm speaking on a resolution if you'll give me a chance to comment, but like I said in the beginning, why are you restricting comments on any bills?
Oh, so you have to?
You need to understand what we're complaining about in order to act upon.
You have to take that up with the court.
Holding departments responsible for titles have been transferred without due process illegally requires counsel, the district attorney, to take action. This counsel still, every week for over six months, now transfers property to Redevelopment Authority even though it has been duly notified of unconstitutional activities. Has an investigation been conducted? Does the counsel care? Obviously not. I am sure if one of your relatives had their property rights taken, they would be held to pay. I am sure they wouldn't have to wait 22 years, like me, for no trial to be allowed and to be opposed by the counsel's attorneys. Ordering the district attorney and the Redevelopment Authority is next. This counsel could resolve this problem and end this injustice. Paul Robeson has quoted, "The answer to injustice is not to silence the critic or not allow the people to speak, but to end the injustice." The ball is in your court, Councilman.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Mr. Decker, have any additional names?
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, if you can read the title of 160282.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees conveying conditional fees, simple tied to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 28th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 160282 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160285.
A resolution also naming the 2700 block of Wharton Street Kevin Hannah Way to honor the memory of Kevin Hannah and to recognize his life and memorialize his lasting legacy.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I am so very proud to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 160285 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160293.
A resolution welcoming, welcoming and encouraging PayPal and other businesses that support lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA to relocate to Philadelphia, a city that has always been on the forefront of nondiscrimination based on gender identity or sexual orientation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 160293 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160018AA.
And ordinance, amending Chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Landlord and Tenant Rent Control" by requiring the tenants of certain multifamily buildings be provided with a written disclosure of the building policy on smoking in individual dwelling units.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyonas Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Councilman Heenan, aye.
Thank you. Ayes are 17, nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Thank you. Mr. Decker, can you read the title of 160013?
And ordinance amending Chapter 10100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Animals" by providing requirements relating to the retail sale of certain animals.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyonas Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17, nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160202.
And ordinance, amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, Chapter III, General Requirements, to require inspections of certain bridges to impose reporting, remediation, and other requirements in connection therewith.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyonas Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17, and nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160113.
And ordinance, authorizing the commissioner of public property to acquire certain land in the 30th Ward of the City of Philadelphia located along the Schuylkill River between South Street and Christian Street known as 624 Rears Schuylkill Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyonas Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 17, and nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring Kathy Black on the occasion of her retirement from AFSCME District Council 47 introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption and pleased to say that Councilman Bill Greenlee was my co-sponsor. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It was moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and remembering the late Ed Snyder, co-founder and owner of the Philadelphia Flyers for nearly 50 years, who passed away Monday, April 11, 2016, at the age of 83 after a long battle with bladder cancer, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution and is co-sponsored by Councilman Heenan and Councilman Squilla.
Thank you. It's moved in properly second, and we shall take the vote by standing vote. That adoption is adopted. That resolution is adopted. Thank you.
And a resolution recognizing the month of April as Financial Literacy Month in the City of Philadelphia and authorizing the Joint Committees on Children and Youth and Education to hold hearings in order to discuss the issue of financial literacy amongst Philadelphia's youth and the possibility of implementing financial literacy classes in Philadelphia's public schools, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Mr. President, also co-sponsored by Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilwoman Gimm, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution acknowledging and recognizing the American Jewish Committee for their Mayors United Against Anti-Semitism Initiative and commending Mayor James F. Kenny for his support of this initiative by adding his name to the list of more than 300 U.S. mayors and municipal leaders from 48 states and the District of Columbia who have supported this important initiative introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commemorating the unveiling of a statue of Corporal Michael J. Chrysens, Philadelphia's only Medal of Honor recipient of the Vietnam War, at the Philadelphia Vietnam Veterans Memorial, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Herman Fraser for his gold medal career in track and field and athletic administration, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, and I have to recognize Councilman Curtis Jones Jr., who I'm learning every day is a very significant person in Philadelphia in track and field, and so with that, I'd like to move for the adoption of the resolution.
Yeah, I heard the second. I was just contemplating what the councilman said. Is that because of your daughter?
Yes.
All right.
With a nickname like Turtle, come on.
All right. Thank you.
Council President, Herman Fraser is a gold medal Olympian and a Pan-American gold medalist. He was in the '76 Olympics, and I've worked with a lot of the track and field people, and I learn more and more that many of our champions have been coached by Curtis Jones Jr. So he's got a talent there.
All right. Awesome. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May 2016 as Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and their invaluable contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President, and of course, joined and co-authored by Councilman Helen Gimm. I'm proud to move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing San Mateo Carnavalero for the 10th anniversary of the Festival de Carnival de Puebla in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, with Councilman Maria Kenyonas Sanchez and Councilman Mark Squilla, move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution?
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes the calendar for the day, and are there any speeches on the part of the minority? And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to notify everyone in council and throughout the city that on September 17th of last year, this council body passed a resolution declaring 2016, this year, is a year to combat the heroin epidemic. And there will be a hearing on Friday, May 20th, before the Public Health and Human Service Committee chaired by Councilwoman Cindy Bass. In preparation of that hearing, I have spoken to numerous experts throughout the country and within our city, but I think one of the important things that we must do is But I think one of the important things that we must do is hear from people in our community. And therefore, I've placed on every council member's desk a schedule of the hearings. And we have reached out to the offices. But if there is a hearing in or near your district that affects your district, please let me know to co-host this with me. It's an exploration of, you know, how the heroin epidemic is affecting people in our communities. And also, because the experts inform me that one of the best ways to deal with heroin epidemic in a large city like Philadelphia is to rely on smaller groups of local community members to provide the energy and leadership and information in working in smaller ways throughout our city. I appreciate all the efforts that have been done. I first was made very seriously aware of the heroin epidemic or heroin use when I was in the district attorney's office and then as a defense counsel. At this point in time, the effects of drug abuse are rampant, and it's very sad. We deal with a lot of great things, happy things in this body, but also a lot of sad things, none more so than the wasting away of human beings and their human potential with a very unhappy life and a very slow way to bring themselves to their demise. And so if there's any way we can help, and those parents and family members and community members, please come and share your experience, your knowledge, and your suggestions on how we as a city can work together coordinating our departments more effectively to address and resolve, I hope, this type of devastating epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the majority... Oh, I said one more minority. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Council President, thank you very much. Last Friday, we had a great opportunity to celebrate with Villanova basketball team, their national championship. But I think the celebration also constituted a great effort by the city of Philadelphia. Personally, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Kenny and his staff, Philadelphia Police Department, the Fire Department, the Streets Department, and also our city representative, Sheila Hess, who put together a wonderful parade and celebration at really only a couple of days' notice. At the end of that parade, and I had the opportunity, really a great honor, to personally congratulate Coach Jay Wright. But the reason for my remarks today is Coach Jay Wright also said to us, as I was introduced as a member of this legislative body, he wanted to thank City Council personally, and henceforth the reason for my remarks today. It really was a remarkable day. The team was very impressed, and the coach was greatly honored by that celebration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the majority, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick points. Number one, I want to join the council particularly about CLS today. They have taken on the cause or re-engaged on the cause of some of the individuals that come down here every week about the sheriff's sales system. And they're working with a lot of them to deal with individual cases while Councilwoman Bass and I look at some of the systematic things that we can improve. But I want to thank CLS for taking that responsibility. The second thing that I want to talk about is that everyone knows that we will, on April 26, have an election. It'll be for the nominees for the President of the United States, both parties. It'll be for congressional. It'll be for row offices at the state level. But also, a piece of work, a couple of pieces of work, that the city council put forth on the ballot initiative. One of them that I rise to speak about today is the African-American Males Commission. And I would urge everyone within the sound of my voice to fight for that. It doesn't take long once you've attended one of our hearings dealing with justice or whether we talk about the award that was given for revamping justice. How many African-American males wind up in that system or in that violence? And we need to figure out why. Councilman Johnson invited me up to Grattisford to meet with a group of long-term inmates there. And these were intelligent, bright men that have run afoul of the law. Also, next month, will be, God willing, attending Lincoln University's graduation because my track daughter is graduating from there with a master's degree. Now, two different outcomes dealing with a population of males. And we need to figure out why one trajectory happens versus the other. It could be that many of the men that we met with up Grattisford come from single-headed household homes. It could be that education may have failed them along the way, and they could not read up to par and ran afoul of the law. It could be a number of things. But the point of the commission is to find out why. And if we do that, and if we make it permanent as the ballot question offers, we will have time to study this. I often, too often, according to my staff, talk about if there were 300 whales washed up on the shore of Delaware, every marine biologist in the world would want to know why. But 300 men can die every year due to gun violence, and it's a new normal. Well, we need to take a look at that. We need to study that. We need to reverse those trends and get positive outcomes for that particular at-risk population. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have much of a speech, but on a happy note, it is somebody that's a friend of all of ours and colleagues's birthday today. And I'd like to recognize and wish them and that Councilman Dom a very happy birthday and keep up the good work. We're proud to have you here in this body and call you a colleague. Happy birthday.
Okay, Council?
Thank you. Thank you for those wishes. And here's my birthday wish, earned income tax credit. And I just want to make this one quick announcement that we have till April 18. We're four days into it. And I don't want to leave that $100 million in Washington, D.C. I want it in Philadelphia, helping those 40,000 people. So anyone here today, the press, anybody can tell people about it. I figured out if anyone makes anywhere from $8 or $7.50 an hour up to $20 an hour, and they have children, they could qualify. There's a lot of people that could qualify. So let's try to get this money in their hands. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just have one small announcement, but I want to also just be supportive of my colleagues, the Chairman of Public Safety, comments, Councilman Curtis Jones regarding our national efforts to address the issue of youth gun violence. And he always used the analogy of if so many whales washed up on the shore, how we would address the issue. And it should also be the equivalence of how we address the issue of youth gun violence. But also, I'm going to bring it home as well and look at how recently the Center for Disease on a national level have issued a call to urgency, as well as President Barack Obama, to address the Zika virus. On a federal level, they have transferred over several million dollars that was left over from looking at the Ebola virus to begin looking at the Zika virus. And they also are requesting $1.9 billion to address the Zika virus. So we will see far more young people being shot and murdered on the streets of Philadelphia and throughout this country on a day-to-day basis than you will actually see individuals passing away and dying from the Zika virus. And that's the same level of urgency that we need to have when we see not only just the issue of youth gun violence in urban areas, but even when you look at Sandy Hook, you know, and other little counties throughout this country where people are dying as a result of gun violence. And I've just recently sent to my colleagues today a gun that was confiscated, an assault rifle. You see the clip, the magazine clip on the gun. That's here in the city of Philadelphia that was confiscated this week. And I'm a firm believer that we have to take personal responsibility and encourage our young men to not pick up guns in the first place. But there are no Uzis made in Point Breeze or Strawberry Mansion. That gun came from somewhere. And so just want to follow up and be supportive of my colleagues as we address this issue of youth gun violence and make sure we keep this the number-one priority here in the city of Philadelphia. I want to invite everyone out this Saturday to the Second Annual Point Breeze 5K Walk and Run in Health Care. I'm doing this event in partnership with Sky Community Partners and Councilman David O, Councilwoman Blind Dog Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Derek Green, all in the effort to raise awareness for pancreatic cancer. But most importantly, encourage people to come on out and take advantage of and take control of improving their health. And so it's going to take place on Saturday at 24 from Wharton at 8:00 a.m. And so I encourage and challenge everyone to come on out. If you don't want to run, you can walk. But come on out and start focusing on improving the quality of your health. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your good work. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. This week, the Committees on Children and Youth and Education held a hearing on the state of services in our public schools. Among the things that came forward has been council's serious attention to the issue of teacher vacancies and the impact that it has had on young people and on the school communities, among them being the fact that thousands of young people will be going into remedial programs this summer or will need to seek credit recovery because they have not had a teacher in the classroom or a certified teacher in the classroom for more than two-thirds of the year. We have thousands of children in grades K to three that are in split grades. We have a disastrous $34 million source for teachers contract that has ravaged many of our school communities. But the one thing that I wanted to say is that I hope that council doesn't see this as being a situation of hopelessness, but that our attention to this issue is actually bringing some change, among them the fact that we are able to guarantee a full-time nurse and counselor in every single district public school in September, no matter what the governor's budget says, and that we made that a priority. We're pushing the district to eliminate split grades, and Councilman Johnson is helping make sure that we get an answer on that source for teachers contract. These things are moving the district slowly towards the priorities that matter for every single child across the city. And the last thing I wanted to add is the most important thing that we should see as a huge lift and opportunity for our city, which is the fact that the School District of Philadelphia is looking to hire 800 jobs for teachers, probably the best job that we can bring to the city. And honestly, if a company were coming here saying that they promised an average of $50,000 a year jobs, highly educated, to come to this city, many of us would be doing everything we can to make that happen. But I think we can also do that today by trying to figure out different ways to be creative about attracting teachers here, about making sure that they can live in the communities in which they teach, that we can embrace a whole approach and understand that schools are economic engines and drivers, that they can help rebuild our neighborhoods, they can bring new life and vitality to our communities. But I want to thank all my colleagues who are doing everything in their power to drive attention to and focus the district on its core mission, which is the teaching and learning of our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I will be very brief. Many of you have probably seen the news reports regarding the unfortunate situation that happened to Ms. Bonnie Moran, a letter she received from someone who was not quite neighborly regarding her autism. I want to commend Ms. Moran. I had a chance to talk with her the other day and also commend her neighbors who are neighborly, who really worked and have encouraged her in reference to that issue. I know she's been in conversation with Councilman Heenan in his office regarding that issue. And when you have unfortunate things like this happen, especially during Autism Awareness Month, we need to have more autism acceptance. And in fact, we do have strong neighbors here in the city of brother love and sisterly affection that were able to work with Ms. Moran and her family and let her know and her children know that this is not what Philadelphia is about. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That appears to conclude our speeches on the part of the minority and majority. And with that, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council standard adjourn until Thursday, April 21, 2016, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, that the council standard adjourn until Thursday, April 21, 2016, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Ayes have it. Thank you all very much.